Exerted.
Yeah, I guess so too. And they want a bigger room, but fashion.
This council meeting to order on June 29th, 2024 at 6:30. Can I get, what did I say? I'm gonna just. It'll be June 29th, yeah. What is today?
I haven't even.
No, this is 12. That's 12. Okay. About that. All right, can I get Deputy Clarkson to do the roll call, please?
Carter.
Here.
Pellet. Bacon.
Here.
Hodgkin.
Here.
Lawrence.
There.
Mackey. Morrison.
Here.
Newbell.
Here.
Bertini.
Here.
Fredo. Fredo.
Here.
Theodore. Taylor.
Here.
Or.
Here.
Thank you.
If we can all stand for the pleasure of the ladies, we have a flag on this side now. I took a huge leap. You can play it sometimes. I'm not gonna make that question. I pledge allegiance to the flag. We do not excuse or deny our town. And we salute our people for which standards. One nation under God, in the best of all, with every change of our own. Oh, wait, the actions, yeah, twice your actions, I think. All right, counsel, prayers of the. Morrison.
On the agenda.
I booked in second during discussion.
Yes. I have one thing I would like you to ask. Maybe Debbie Pierachini can answer this. On the May expense report, I noticed.
Hey, oh, sorry, Councilmember Carter, just a point of order. I think I know where you're going with this, and we're gonna save that for the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I had nothing to discuss, thank you.
Any more questions? Call favor.
Bye.
All right.
opposed? Right, pass. Your, now we're gonna give them some public comments, and please leave us. Keep your comments to three minutes. Say your name and your ward or your address. And like I said before, even though you don't have to, I hope you can be kind in your words. Thank you. Public comment. Is it not on?
I'll push the battery in from the back button, didn't get activated. There you go. Then I don't take a minute to think about it.
There we go.
Did the red light come on?
We're booting up.
Oh.
While we're booting up, can I, can I talk, is that okay?
Yeah.
Um.
We're dead.
Les Bolton, Ward four. I wanted to talk to you about. Come on, here we go. I wanted to speak tonight about the EMF situation. You guys are gonna be voting on that tonight. And I misspoke at the last meeting. I didn't know, it's kind of off the cuff, and I'm sorry about that. But, you know, I've done a little research now, and our population is at 17,196 people. Our proportion of our population that is below the, at or below the federal poverty level is close to 21%, which means that, you know, we've got 3,600 people that this is gonna impact significantly, and I get that. But, but we've also got 13,580 people that could actually handle that increase. And so I'm hoping tonight you guys will vote no that we don't want to just kick the can down the road because, let's face it, city council has been very good at kicking the council down the road for decades, and that's how we get where we are today. So, so what I would ask is, hold off. Come up with a plan that's going to allow those 13,585 people to kick in their quarter million dollars. And somehow subsidize those 3,600 people that need, need the help. I mean, I, I think that's a, you know, a good solution as opposed to kicking the can down the road. Maybe you're a council member next time, maybe you're not, but somebody's gonna be looking at, wow, are we gonna raise the rates $38 this time or $42? I mean, let's, let's start smoothing that out and help resolve your budget problem. So, thanks. Thank you.
Didn't know if I was gonna talk, but I gave me a little bit to talk about because I actually had a similar thought. It should be subsidized of mine, from four or five, by the way.
Name and address for work.
My of four or five. So there, there are a lot of people that are, this is gonna impact significantly. He had obvious numbers. But at the same time, there should be an option for opting out of it because there are a lot of people that are utilized in these services that are paying zero into it. And on top of that, there are people that do not support the EMTs. I am one of those people. I watch those men stare at me while my son died inside of me. I will never support giving them more money. So there just needs to be more options for the citizens, for the people to make that decision on how much money they're gonna put forth. There are enough people in this town that are for the $30, the $50. Let them pay that. The other people, let them choose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Victoria, the library manager for the Aberdeen Library. Something a little bit lighthearted. I just wanted to talk about some of our programs this summer, just to kind of highlight. We call it Library in the Parks, I believe Parks and Parks calls it Park and Play. We have a great lineup of programs this summer, and one of the things I wanted to highlight that's coming on June 26th, we're partnering with Paws, and they will be coming out with their puppies so that potatoes can feed the dog for Wildlife Park. We also have lots of other programs to look over to. During World Music Day, there's an opportunity to come and learn how to make a book. We have a book making workshop. We also have Jeff Evans come now. We're gonna have the reptile program again this summer, and STEM programming, and lots more. So please feel free to take a look at our Facebook page or calendar. We have a lot for the families this summer, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, friends. Stacy Osorio, County jurisdiction, Hoquam, work in Aberdeen. So I'm here most of the time. I'm gonna shift gears to the fluoride dispersion real quick, and I have some bullet points of some health effects of fluoride and some facts, either for or against whatever you discover. So there is a great lack of high-quality research on risk versus benefits of fluorids. Hey, you can save some money by not treating the city's water with fluoride. It's obviously not, it may cause health problems, but it's also, has not been proven effective to justify the costs. It violates pharmacological principles by not giving the individual, to be able to give informed consent. It doesn't take into account individual variations as far as effects. There is such a thing as acute fluoride poisoning. There have been incidences in 1991 and 1998 and 2010 in which people were poisoned by accidental overexposure of fluoride. Based on Ossines Direct, published data on the toxicity on aquatic life, and it accumulates in exoskeleton of invertebrates and bone tissues of vertebrates. It inhibits enzyme activity, interrupting metabolic processes, including glycolysis and protein synthesis. There have been case reports of accelerated aging. Researchers from Harvard in the 1960s knew that the fluoride ion disrupts collagen synthesis. It leads to the breakdown of collagen, and there are several studies verifying that. It leads to not only collagen breakdown, but breakdown of bone, tendon, muscle, skin, cartilage, lung tissue, kidney tissue, and tracheal tissue, which are all components of collagen, of course. It produces imperfect collagen. Loma Linda University did work to support work proving that fluoride causes irregular bone growth. We said that it increases the aging process. None of us wants to get older quicker and have problems. There is cumulative damage to cells causing arthritis, arterial sclerosis, brittle bones, and wrinkles. I don't want more wrinkles. It interferes with the enzymes responsible for bone growth and repair. I don't know if anybody's had a onion, but that's a bony outgrowth, and these can occur along the spine, it's been proven with exposure to fluoride. It causes hardening of the arteries, and there are genetic damage effects. It causes defective repair enzymes causing cancer. Zerodermapigmentosa can be caused. People in their twenties can have the same cancer risk as normal people in their eighties. That's kind of concerning. It lowers the DNA repair enzyme activity by 50%. The end. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? I'm staying there. Counselor President Morrison.
I would like to, I would like to move to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes minutes from the May 29th meeting, council payable, payroll, and the, I think that should say May homelessness expense report. Second.
First. Second, is there any discussion? Oh, yes. I have a question. Perhaps Debbie Pierachini can answer it. Right here, it states with all the costs on the public work slash staff cost, staff person assigned to downtown cleanup, $17,470 for the month of May. So is that one person getting paid 17 grand? Or how is that money dispersed out? I mean, that seems like an awful lot of money.
What they do to calculate that is, there are two people that are specified to do cleanups downtown. That's their regular job, and they are paid a regular salary. And then for the specific suites that we're doing, where they go in and clean up, they take the salaries of each person that is involved in the cleanup, and they calculate it that way. So it's not just the two people, it's the combined wages of everyone involved in the cleanups.
So you're talking. So, Councilperson Carter, you're talking about the normal everyday cleanup that we have down our alleys? Is that, that's what the two people are? Oh, well, yeah, it doesn't specify. It just says, it just says staff person, person, not persons, person assigned to downtown cleanup, $17,470. And this all comes out to around $200,000 a year. So how does this?
I know, it just seems like a very little thing, but if, if we do those reports, there could be a little bit more clarity because I could get a lot of questions this week thinking like, who are we paying $17,000 to a month, you know? So if there was a way to kind of, whatever word you want to use or whatever, just to specify, you know, a little more that this isn't just one person getting $17,000, I think that would, you know, we could avoid a lot of confusion.
I think so too. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job. Anything else?
With all I have, thank you.
All right. The motion was made in second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay. So I didn't really have much to say on my mayor's report today, other than World Music Day is coming up on the twenty-first. And a lot of musicians will be coming to town, a lot of regular folks that are like me. That I just practice on that piano. I'm not really a musician. But if somebody wanted to come over by the gallery with some earplugs, they might wanna listen. I'll be, I'll be with my keyboard. But anyway, it's a wonderful day to celebrate National Music Day. There will be a lot of celebrities. There'll be a lot of things going on downtown. So I encourage everybody to go down that day, and I think it starts around noon. And they'll be giving prizes away. Just walk around and have something to do downtown. All right, council reports. Any council people like to give a report? Then, okay. You know, just so everybody knows, so all the council people and me, we go lots of meetings. And so we do get lots of stuff to report on. We just don't always have it all on our fingertips. So there are a lot of, a lot of things to report on. Pardon me? All right, see, I just had this little talk. Now, now Councilperson Ellis wants to do it before.
I was able to go on a tour of the port facilities. And I got to see that there are hundreds of cars that come into the port here for distribution all over the country. It's not just the one lot that is visible from the road next to Home Depot. That's just a drop in the bucket of lots and lots of cars. And we see the trucks hauling cars out of here. They go out by rail. That represents a lot of jobs that contribute to our economy. And that was just really helpful to see and hear more about how the port functions. And then I'm also a board member on the Graves Harbor Historical Seaport Association Authority. And they had, we had a strategic planning session, which was very productive. And will be, there will be follow-up on that. And looking forward to helping the seaport have won their votes in Aberdeen Founder's Day Parade. There's my report. Thank you.
I wasn't following her, but I did go to the same meeting. Any other council people? Reports? No? All right, let's go on to staff reports. City Administrator Clementary's?
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, June tenth, I sent out the budget instructions to the directors, the prosecutor, our prosecuting attorney, municipal judge, and the library manager of the twenty-twenty-five budget. When they've been asked to trim their budgets. They've been asked to provide two scenarios that would trim their budget by fifteen percent over the course of two years and three years. Fifteen percent budget cut is a very aggressive budget cut that would drastically impact services and programs to the community. So I requested scenarios that would ease into that over the course of two and three years. We also submitted our year-end financial. We submitted them a day early. So thanks to Cindy Mohammed for getting that done for the city. This is Cindy's first year as accountant, accountant three, and she's doing a great job so far. So glad that she could, she could work with Tara to get that submitted on time. She also contacted the state auditor's office to schedule the city's next audit for, and our next audit will be in August. So she will be the lead for the city on that, and the rest of us will play a supporting role. If you recall, last year's audit was led by Becca Weiss. And we had no findings that year. And so our hope is to continue that and make that a regular thing for the city of no findings. So we are currently monitoring the city's revenue projections. Our targeted projection for this, at this point of the year, should have been, should have been at forty-one point seven percent. And our actuals came out to thirty-nine point two percent. So again, we are down revenues just slightly. But the accumulation of all of these revenue shortfalls may impact us in the end as we're building the budget. So that's something else that the directors, that we're keeping an eye on. And the directors will also have to be aware of as we're building our twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five budgets. So, are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a little, so part of the port tour, we saw those big green silos that they just added. Do we know when those are gonna go online? I didn't think they have them. So I, I mean, there's like millions of dollars in tax revenue that the city will get from that.
The estimated date for them to break ground, last I heard, was the end of the summer.
To start using them?
To start. The new silos are, they're gonna be building, maybe?
They're all built. They're just, they're probably finished by now. I just was wondering when they would go online instead of receiving grain.
Should.
In speaking with Commissioner, sorry. I need to lower that. In speaking with Representative from the, the port. It sounds like they are waiting, and I think just clearance at this point to get them done. They're, they're really pushing the federal government to make these approvals so that they can get them online. Because their grant is dependent on like getting these approvals. So I think that's all they're waiting on. Gary Nelson was hoping to get that done before he left. But as you know, it's something that we're also being impacted with the Levy project, the environmental, like, at the federal level, everything is delayed. The environmental assessment for the Levy project is a three-year. So if that tells you anything. So I think everything is slowed at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any of the directors flag? How about Director Byrne first?
All right. I'm gonna screen up there. So I wanted to give an update. We've got a lot of summer events coming up. Our summer park and play kickoff is on June twentieth at Finch Playfield at six P M. And our actual park and play program will start that Monday. That's at North End Park, Peterson Playfield, Finch Playfield, and Pioneer Park. We contract with the Y M C A of Graves Harbor to provide recreational and educational programs in our parks. And the Aberdeen School District provides free and reduced lunches. And we partner with the library, and Victoria talked about some of the programs they have coming up in our parks this summer as well. She already talked about the June twenty-sixth event. And then June seventeenth through August twenty-third are the dates of park and play at those four parks. From eleven A M to one P M. July fourth is the Splash Festival. I put a draft flyer that doesn't have that Morrison Park is on that draft. So unfortunately, we haven't printed them yet. But you have the information on the entertainers that will be there and the schedule of events for the Fourth of July, which is at Morrison Park this year. And there's also flyers by the agendas for anyone who's in the audience who'd like to grab one on their way out. We'll have the movie in the park, which is the Sandlot, on Saturday, July thirteenth. And that'll be about nine thirty P M. It's an outdoor movie, so it starts about dark. And we'll also have music in the park scheduled both that Saturday and Sunday, and we'll have times for that this week. July eleventh at twelve P M at Finch Playfield, we'll have the reptile lady, which I will not be there. I'm not a reptile fan. July twenty-sixth at eleven A M, Smokey the Bear's storytime will be at North End Playfield. Actually, I should do this.
If I may, just for a minute.
Yes.
Thank you for your work on that. It's so nice to see so many family-centered projects going on for the summer. I love that. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, the staff does a good job. And we're actually, we've got a few more events that we're, we're still working on. So we should have that information hopefully for the end of the month meeting that I can share with you. Some projects that we have this summer, the Sturts Park Trail Bridge replacement and repairs to the whole trail system should start in July. We've got the contractor lined up to speak and then, and then park staff will be repairing all of the bridges, boardwalks, stairways along the trail system. We'll be doing repairs to the Little League grandstands. That's a partnership project with Aberdeen Little League through a Grace Harbor Community Foundation grant that we received. And we're also able to add new fencing to the Little League field, and that's all in anticipation of the state tournament, which starts on July thirteenth. We got a new scoreboard that will be built at the Bishop Athletic Complex on Field A. The Aberdeen High School Carpentry Program is volunteering their services to build a new scoreboard there. And the Aberdeen High School Fast Pitch Team is paying for all the materials for the new scoreboard. They'll start work on that on June eighteenth. And then Five Star Dealerships paid for a second scoreboard for us, which is placed at Pioneer Field Three. So I wanted to thank some of our community partners and sponsors, and these are just a few. We have a lot of community partners that we work with throughout the year, but these are some of the recent ones. The, as I mentioned, Five Star Dealerships. It moved on mine, sorry. I don't know, technical difficulties? Okay, well, I'll just give it to you verbally unless it pops up. So Five Star bought the Kenley Field scoreboard. They're a major splash sponsor at six thousand dollars. And then they bought the Pioneer Field Three scoreboard. So that's twenty-three thousand dollars in partnership projects. And I mentioned Aberdeen High School Carpentry Program and the High School Fast Pitch Team. The partnership with Aberdeen Little League Field for twenty-five thousand dollars in improvements to the field. We finished up the Grace Harbor College Field Project, which was paid for by the Grace Harbor College Foundation for forty-five thousand dollars. We partnered with our Aberdeen to split the costs for the repainting of the two kiosks downtown and the kiosk at Kurt Cobain Park. And we also got a donation from, from Baby Redibix for bark, for Morrison River, Morrison River Front Park. So we'll get that done before the Splash Festival. And it never popped up? Okay, well, I will share my last screen because of the splash schedule. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I, I just want you to, I hope all of you understand how important Stacy is to our organization. Because she leverages so much money through the partnerships and the relationships that she's built around the community. As you saw, we have tens of thousands of dollars worth of donated time and money to support our parks. Aberdeen is the only parks department in all of Graves Harbor, Pacific County, probably Waukia Town as well. And so it's, Aberdeen supports not only our community, but we have people from other communities that drive over here to attend our events and to participate in our recreation programs. As, you know, and then lastly, I would like to commend the council. Last year, this year's budget, you increased her budget to allow for those movies in the park, to allow for those community events based on the homeless survey that we launched, where we posed the question, how connected do you feel to the city of Aberdeen? And almost half of the people said, I do not feel connected to the city of Aberdeen. So because of your decision, you were able to allow Stacy to create those points of connections for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Scott, I think you have a report.
I do, thank you. So every, usually I come to you a little bit earlier. It's a little bit late this year. But just as election season near, please remember that if you are campaigning for anybody or putting signs up, no election signs on city property or city right-of-way. And make sure that you get permission from Aberdeen property owners when you do place signs in the right-of-way. So we've been getting some complaints, and if you are, if you have found that anybody is missing signs, come see us. Because there are times that we will remove them and keep them at City Hall for people to pick up. So that's just a reminder. Second is also a reminder that we have a workshop next Wednesday for going over the zoning code. We've got the draft out online. It went out on June fifth, so it's two hundred and some odd pages to get through. And there are plenty of things that will change. This is the draft. It's sometimes easier to work from a draft and formulate your questions that you have. But the meeting will be Zoom, via Zoom. And the consultants will be there as well, and they're gonna do a presentation, and it's time to ask questions. From then, we will look to bring the first draft for reading to the council at the end of July, the last meeting in July. So it gives us plenty of time to take comments, make changes before we bring that first draft back. And all said and done, we would hope to have an approved plan in place by the first of September. So that's quite exciting. It's the last major plan we have yet to do. So I hope to see all of you next Wednesday. This has been a lot of work and some good, exciting changes coming forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Scott. Chief Golding?
I think Director Sanger.
I'm good.
Oh, thank you.
I did, I, oh, go ahead. All right.
I just have an update as well. You'll probably remember, two meetings ago, we brought forward a emergency declaration for a sewer line that was failing in the Wishka River Crossing Station Four there by Redwater. We, that, that work was already planned to be done next year. So we had already started the design on that, and it was estimated to be about a million dollars. Big, big project, all on the city side. As it happens, the timing of it, sometimes you are better lucky than good. And because it happened on an emergency basis, we were able to apply for Commerce money. And the project, the project actually is estimated now at eight forty, eight hundred and forty thousand. And we were able to get six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar grant of free money from Commerce for emergency actions. And, and the remainder, we are going to be getting a grant loan. It's a, it's a, it's a loan, but it has a fifty percent forgivable principal. So we've, we've taken that million-dollar project down to under a hundred thousand dollars of city money. So that's great. The, the big thing I wanted to bring up was, it kinda flew under the radar that night at council. But there's gonna be, pipe is gonna be delivered on-site on Friday, and construction is gonna start on Monday. This is a, this is an emergency. This is, there's certain situations that we could be losing, losing wastewater into the river. So it has to happen immediately. We're, you know, we've changed the way we're operating the pumps. So you're, there's gonna be some traffic issues on F Street between Wishka and Heron. And, and that'll be Friday while they're unloading pipe. And then there's, they're gonna dig a big hole in Zalasco Park, and we're going to be putting that directional bore through. So just wanna give everybody a heads up on, expect some unfortunate traffic consequences next couple weeks.
Thank you, Rick. Incredible work.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Honestly, I mean, I've been writing, but I can't really see. I can just see a badge here, so I didn't.
I would love to pay credit for that grant, but that is one hundred percent our city engineer had a past relationship with somebody at Commerce and reached out to him and said, hey, we got this problem. What do you got? And they said, well, we have six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars left that has to be spent by the end of June. So.
Is that Nick?
Sometimes it's all about timing.
Well, well done to Nick, Ben.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's go on to finance, and we're going to go to Capitol Personnel.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee met tonight, and we have a few things coming up for council attention. The first is a report requesting, from, a request from Finance recommending the city council approve the proposed city credit card purchasing policy. I move we support this, approve this report. Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion on this policy report?
So the city passed, so the city passed the, this policy in March of last year. There was an amendment for noncompliance that was added. So this is more of an amendment than it is a new policy. So my apologies for bringing this forward as such.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay, so the amendment.
We have a request from Finance recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to execute the contract with Tara Laman Enterprises Incorporated. I move we adopt this report. Second.
It moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, um, so there will be some changes with this new contract having troubles with this box. That better?
Yeah.
Sorry, everyone. Um, first of all, by approving this, um, contract with Lemay, it offers for the very first time a senior discount. And, um, and that there will also be some changes in what can be recycled and what can't be. For many years, we've been able to recycle plastic bags. Um, that will no longer be allowed, but, um, I would like to hope because we generate so much plastic that there can be some way found to, um, get this out of our otherwise waste stream.
Can I, can I say something about that?
Sure.
Well, uh, there's a, there's a movement in California that's funding bags. They also wanted to gotten rid of. Have they, system totally get it a little rope and then just tie it in a knot two or four times? And they're not out looking around in the ocean like catching fish and killing them. I mean, that's, uh, if we can't recycle them, at least we can minimize the damage.
I believe that you can also recycle plastic, at least the shopping plastic bags at the local grocery stores and so.
Um, the other thing is, uh, cardboard has to be separated from any plastic. So.
That's the old way.
Yeah, we're going to have to cut these, these off. And, uh, cardboard boxes that get delivered that has reinforced tape. If you can't get the, the tapes and/or plastic label off, they'll have to go in the garbage. Cause that, um, makes it impossible for them to recycle the cardboard with that, those contaminants. So, um, recycling is going to take a bit of extra work and hopefully Lemay will work with us to do a good job of, um, providing some educational flyers, mailers to remind us of, here's what we can and cannot recycle and how it needs to be repaired. So heads up on that.
But have you know if there have been any conversations with Lemay about doing that kind of outreach with people?
Yes.
Yes. And, um, the mayor and I were invited to the city of Port Angeles to, um, the city of Port Angeles, they actually manage their own dump sites, so they manage their own garbage. That's one of the utilities they provide. And, um, I was able to get a flyer from them that is, it's, uh, yeah, that uses education for the public that's sent out every year. Um, I would like, I'm going to send that to Lemays and would like them to, to include that.
Nice, Pete. Do you have any questions for Lemays?
Oh, this is Roger Wallander from Lemays.
Thank you for talking.
It's going to be quiet. You guys are going to answer questions. They're doing good. Yeah, we have that discussions and it's in the new contract that there is educational thing that has to be done every year.
Perfect.
Cause education is a huge, so a huge step that right now is part of recycling. So the change within the recycling, um, is kind of dictated by the thing in recycled industry. We can only recycle what our, so facilities will take. We're kind of held to that. Right now, that's what they can handle.
Maybe we could do our part too when the city mailer goes out, maybe put some information in that too.
We got that.
And, and I also talked to, um, council member Ellis that if she really wants to take it to the next level, this is something, you know, if the council would like that we could advocate at the state level to talk about just, you know, recycling at that level and what is the state's effort on this, so.
Yeah, this, um, so recently, um, at a state level, restaurants can no longer provide takeout food in, um, Styrofoam containers. It may be that we need to have, um, additional guidance on, um, for folks that ship packages commercially, um, that only recyclable labels and tapes can be used. Um, but yeah, that's something that we can look at. Another change that I think is really welcome in this contract is that for years we've not been given any, um, data about how many tons, um, our citizens produce in terms of garbage and recycling. And, uh, so we will be getting a report, um, that gives us at least some level of guidance on that. I think that will be helpful too.
Any more discussion? Thank you, sir. Call in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Captain.
And we have a resolution updating the fees and charges for the city's ambulance and emergency services utility as allowed in AMC 13.80.090 and 13.80.110. And I'd like to ask the city clerk to, um, read that resolution or summary of that resolution piece.
Have the resolution. I.
Did we not discuss it in planning?
Oh, we did. I am in the bulletin right now. A resolution setting fees and charges for the ambulance and emergency medical services utility under AMC 13.80.090 and 13.80.110 and superseding resolution 2021 dash 26. Whereas the city conducted a cost study, the cost of service study as required by RCW 35 dot 21 dot 766. And whereas the study concluded that a rate increase is necessary to continue providing adequate service to the city. Be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Aberdeen effective August 1, 2024, the following fee shall be charged by the city's ambulance and emergency medical services utility. Um, and then there is a table here, emergent or non-emergent transport rates per call. Um, basic life support, RVLS resident, $950, nine, I mean, how much do you want me to raise? So $1,150 for non-residents, advanced life support, $1,150 for residents, non-residents, 1,350. Um, let, I'm sorry, 1,350, advanced life support level two, 1,350 for residents, 1,550 for non-residents, special prepared transport, 1,450 and 1,600 for residents and 1,650 for non-residents. Mileage charge is $20 per mile pickup to destination per call. Standby rate if an ambulance stands by waiting for a patient for more than 30 minutes, $100 per half hour, including the first 30 minutes, shall be charged per call. Response and service charge, service, um, service that involves the use of supplies or equipments other than the ambulance itself, but does not involve transportation of the patient, $250 per call. Monthly service fee, the monthly service fee authorized by AMC 13 dot, uh, uh, 80.090 shall be $31.87 for each non-exempt utility user classification. The monthly service fee reflects only the availability, availability, availability component of the rate study adopted by the city council. Effective January 1, 2025, the monthly service fee authorized by AMC 13.80.090 shall be $34.11 for each non-exempt uh, utility user classification. Effective January 1, 2026, the monthly service fee authorized, um, by AMC 13.80.90 shall be 36.32 for each non-exempt utility user classification. Effective January 1, 2027, the fee shall be $38.68 for each non-exempt utility user. And effective January 1, 2028, the monthly service fee shall be $41.20 for each non-exempt utility user classification. Contracts for non-resident services, all fees and charges for non-resident residing in fire districts, municipal corporations and other EMS service areas shall be set by inter-local agreements. Be further resolved that the rate set by resolution 2021 dash 26 shall remain in effect through July 31, 2024 and the rates here in, shall supersede those in 2023, dash 26.
Thank you very much. And we are revisiting in one year, correct? Okay.
I move we adopt this report. Second.
Is there any more discussion? Councilpersonals?
Yeah, um, at our last meeting, um, we heard some, um, we heard quite a bit of testimony and since then people have written and, um, and I think council as a whole understands that this is an inflationary time that puts particular burdens on people's um, pocketbooks and ability to pay bills. What, um, what I've also heard, which, um, Mr. Bolton talked about as well, was that there are a number of people who are willing to pay a higher rate. And, um, at our last meeting, we approved setting up a rate commission or advisory group. And, um, I would like for that group to, um, investigate having different rates for, as an option. So that, um, for those folks who meet the federal, um, guidelines for poverty, that they would pay the option three rate. And for others, they would pay something more than that. Um.
The city would, the city would pay the deferred portion of the bill.
Well. Um, I'd like to see what the, the finances look like, um, depending on what those rates end up being and how much, um, folks paying the higher rate offsets what is offered to people paying a lower rate. But, um, what I would propose is that, um, I, I'd like us to revisit the sooner than a year, um, knowing that there are a number of people who can pay the higher rate. And, um, we've got till January 1 when these rates are increased regardless.
Rates go up on August 1.
But, but then there's a, another jump in, in January, um, that we, we get our advisory commission going and they advise us. And we can come back to us with a recommendation, um, that we maybe want to put into effect January 1.
I like that. I mean, I like that idea because there's, I, I know that you could take, um, other programs that are other agencies do, they have, uh, in place, uh, lower rates for people who are, who meet the national poverty rate. And I think that might be 900 to like Les said, Mr. Bolton said, it might be up to, uh, 3,000 people, but even that would still save the city, uh, close to 600,000 a year. If the rest of the population was paying the normal fee, I mean, I would have a problem reading the fee. I'd have to wash your cars and, but, but. It's worth it.
Who's going to oversee that though? That seems like that would be a stuffy nightmare trying to figure out, going through paperwork.
That's, that's something you have to work on.
Vol and everything else.
Yeah, I thought there was going to be concerns about.
I thought, yeah, I, you know.
So the PUD offers this and they're able to, um.
Verify.
Yeah.
They would verify.
Paperwork and.
They're, they're verifying.
So how the PUD does it, um, and in speaking with, um, the PUD this week, how they do it is they, um, they have a low income disability rate and then a low income se- or low income senior rate. And, um, with that, they have about, just in, in those that state that they live in the 98520 zip code, um, they have under 800 people that apply for that. Um, and then, yeah, and then they make it up. It's the rest of the rate payers that pick up the rest. And they get, and they use 125% of the federal poverty level as their gauge. And, um, depending on where they, they have a scale and depending on where a person fits in that scale, they can get up to 30 or 35% off of their PUD bill. And again, like the rest is made up through the other rate payers that pay for that. Um, I think that is a feasible option to consider is to have two rates, one that's low income. It doesn't necessarily have to be low income disable, disabled or low income senior, but just low income in general. And they pay that option three rate and then we create like a second rate. Um, that would be, there would have to be a, there would have to be a verification. So the, the, how the PUD does is they have an open enrollment period and people have to provide their tax information or anything like that in order to qualify for it. And they would then receive that, but, um, and then there's a verification process. It's just one form that they fill out and it's something that has to be renewed each year with verification. So again, that's a process that they use. It's not necessarily something we have to adopt, but it's something I think definitely worth looking into. And that's something maybe the, um, utility rate advisory committee could consider.
I stand by option three and I stand by one year and I'd like to call the question. And I'd like a roll call vote, please. Carter?
So this is exactly what Casey just said, option three, we look at it again in one year. Uh, that's a yes for me.
You're voting to approve the resolution presented?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
Gaken?
Yes.
Watchkin?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Newville?
No.
Carachini?
No.
Fredo?
No.
Tatum Taylor?
Yes.
Question passes six to four, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This will be resolution 2024 dash 13.
And you, so now we'll move on to, uh, public safety with Trevor's and Hodge's.
Yes. Okay, so, and we've got the Public Safety Committee, um, activity report for the police. Um, there are almost up to 16,000 calls so far this year. At this point last year, we were at 14,000, so they've been extremely busy. They, um, handled 94 calls in the area of River and State Street. And they've arrested 144 subjects for alcohol driving offenses. That's up by 59%. Um, and, uh, they had a, uh, I just heard about a, a pullover that they had where they found drugs in the car and all sorts of other things. Is that right, chief? Yeah, that was a pretty exciting. You want to tell us a little bit about that?
Uh, sure. Yeah, one of our, uh, police officers had been alerted that somebody had slumped over the wheel of the car. Patrol officers responded, contacted the subject and then the chairman was under the influence. So, uh, they arrest them for DUI. And then when they searched the vehicle for the impound, they found, uh, weapons and, um, cash and drugs, so.
So, thank you for doing a great job. Okay. So for our VIP, uh, VIP report for me, these are the people that volunteered to, um, um, drive around and look for problems. So they have spent 142 hours at May. Um, and that's almost, uh, almost over $2,000 of, of service that they give the city. They do vacation checks on your house. So if you are going to be gone, they will, um, drive by and check your home and make sure that everything's okay. Um, and that's a free service to the citizens. And you can schedule that at, um, aberdeenlaw.gov. Um, and then we've got a, a former A, Aberdeen TV explorer, Thomas Wallace, has been fired and he's going to go into training here and he should. And he's going to go into training here and he should graduate in December and be ready to be on his own in March. So that's exciting. Overdoses are down by 14%. That's good news. And they have four calls to cause in so far in June, just four calls. They had 19 calls in May and the city is able to make $10,000 a month doing that. So that's worked out really well. Only one of those 19 calls actually have any report done on it. So they're pretty much called checking and going really smoothly. So that's true, that's be a really good thing for the city. And then we have some, I'd love to do these, Casey, you can do this for me. So we have requests for council action. So I'll read this off here. The Graves Harbor County Drug Seized 20, 2006 Acura, H V vehicle 392 from a drug forfeiture case in approximately 2017. And the vehicle was transferred to the Aberdeen Police Department. During the course of using the vehicle, it was used as an undercover surveillance vehicle and for a training car, transporting officers and staff to and from training out of the area. It has reached the end of its life and it's not dependable and is continually requiring maintenance. So the vehicle will be auctioned off for federal asset rules and the funds are required to go back to the drug fund as it was an asset forfeiture. It's recommended by the city, Aberdeen City Council, to approve surplus in the APD vehicle 392.
Is there a motion?
And we need a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, a request from Public Safety and Police Chief recommending that the city council approve the surplus of APD's 2006 Acura to be surplus to auction and the funds returned to the drug forfeiture fund. I move we adopt this report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? No, all in paper. Oppose?
Okay, one more, a request from Public Safety and Fire Chief that you need that the mayor be authorized to execute the 2024-2029 Homeland Security Region Three Mutual Aid Obninance Agreement. And we adopt this report.
And second, is there any discussion on this report? Aye, no, all in paper?
Aye.
opposed? Passes? All right, Public Works, Councilperson Lawrence.
Yes, Mayor, we have nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Special agenda items, Council President Morrison.
We have a request from Community Development and Historic Preservation Commission to add two buildings, 121 East Market Street and 202 South K Street to the city's historic register. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? What building is 2101?
So it was the Aberdeen Library, I believe, and the side one building.
Okay. Any more expressions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, passes. To see more buildings get on our historic register. Okay, so now we're back to public comments. So could you limit to three minutes again and state your name and ward or address? And like I said before, be kind. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Ware Jones, Ward four. I just wanted to make it aware, I don't know who to let this know, but over by the library, there's like a brick on the sidewalk, there's a trick house in, can't get that fixed. You guys are super amazing at fixing things. Thanks.
Thank you. And, all right, okay, oh, there we go.
Tracy Jones, I believe I'm in Ward six. I live up by the hospital and we get a lot of people that the police bring up to the hospital. The hospital won't see them and leave them out there on the side of the road. And you can hear them screaming and wailing out in the streets in the middle of the night. They come down to my apartment building four times now. They pulled the fire alarm in the middle of the night because they can't get any help from the hospital. And they're looking to have the police take them to jail so that they get some assistance. It's getting out of control. There was, I watched two officers, yes, the two days ago, put a young girl out on the street from a parking lot up by the medical arts building up there and throw her stuff out into the street. That's not how you treat somebody that's in the throes of mental health illness. You don't do it. Something's got to get done. This has got to get better. It's out of control.
Thank you.
Hi, Stacy Osorio, I'm just gonna finish my little tidbit about fluoride. So it lowers our DNA repair enzyme activity by 50%, causes chromosomal damage, especially to our white blood cells. Substances that cause genetic damage are mutagenic, which also tend to be carcinogenic, and fluoride falls under that category. Rats injected has produced, rats injected with fluoride, excuse me, has produced fibrosarcoma. And the control group had zero cancer. Fruit flies were treated with fluoride and there was an incidence of melanoma tumors. That's all I got for that. I just want to say thank you to Casey and that other gal that go under the bridge. Every Tuesday, if you guys want to show up, it's from 11 to 1, I think. I went down there last week. I plan to go down next week. It's a it's a disaster, like it's terribly sad. And some of those people, as they're walking by, they seem to really appreciate people coming down there and at least trying to help a little bit because after all, they are human and we all become pretty upset with them, but they they need some help and a little bit more compassion. That's all.
Thank you, Stacy. And I'd also like to acknowledge, not just her, but Ms. Jones that come down pretty faithfully and help volunteer. And we'll be down there again tomorrow. This week's a weird week. Next week, back to Tuesdays. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darren Bates. I'm in Ward two. I spoke a little bit before the meeting to the mayor. I would like to put to the council and that we fire Chief Green and get rid of the whole Aberdeen Police Department. As I have evidence, they are not doing their jobs. And when I contact Chief Green about something going on in my ward, his answer most of the time is the vehicle isn't from this area. So when tourists come to Aberdeen, they don't have to abide by state or city laws. This is an ongoing thing. It's been going on for the last two years, I do believe. And I know I'm for one tired of paying the police officers wages, pensions and retirement. And I'm sure many others are, too. This can't go on. I mean, it's out of hand. And all these vehicles are in my area. They're all drug vehicles. And I've got two of them that the tabs have been expired for two years, but they're still on the roads. Why? Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there anything for the good of the order? No? Yes? Need to make a motion?
I need that we end our meeting tonight.
Okay.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for talking to everybody. Appreciate your time.